Good afternoon. Welcome to the Housing and Economic Development Committee. I am James Torrance, Chair of the Committee and Representative of the 7th Council District. Today, the committee will hear Council Bill 250001, Department of Consumer Protection and Business Licensing. In attendance, we have, to my left, Councilman Zach Blanchard of the 11th District; to my right, Councilman Jerain Jones of the 12th District; myself; and then we have the bill sponsor, Councilman Dorsey of the 3rd District. You're welcome, sir. And then also, members of the Office of the President, our President. Wait a minute, who is here? We don't, actually. Nancy Mead is here from the Council President's Office, as well as Council Services. In attendance, we do, I don't see, MoGR is not here. Okay, moving forward. And then we have representatives from various agencies. With that being said, we will get started with Councilman Dorsey's opening remarks. After that, we will then have questions to have panelists and agency reports.
I like the idea of coming up to this podium. I feel like an everyday citizen. Ryan Dorsey, City Council, 3rd District. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for holding this bill hearing today. Baltimore stands out in its uniquely bad approach to regulating businesses and protecting our citizens from predatory practices. In the absence of a professionalized office with a streamlined system, we have resorted over time to repeatedly reinventing the wheel, creating one-off ways to oversee individual consumer protections and business licensing processes, assigning these functions without much rhyme or reason to city staffers whose jobs otherwise have no relation to business licensing or consumer protection laws. In the absence of civil enforcement authority associated with upholding business licensing and consumer protection laws, those penalties that do exist can only be enforced by litigating action, which is essentially never pursued, the juice not being worth the squeeze. This bill creates a Department of Consumer Protection and Business Licensing, a professionalized city service that is long overdue, whose establishment will bring us into step with virtually every other city and county in the country. Along with a system of administration, the bill grants authority for enforcement via civil citation. The possibility of sanctions or penalties requires a system of due process for which this bill creates a board to hear and adjudicate matters, as well as provide general oversight and support to the department and provide research and advice to the mayor and city council on best practices and possible improvements to relevant laws. The introduction of this bill and the establishment of the Department of Consumer Protection and Business Licensing represent critical steps toward making Baltimore a city that is reliable, predictable, and efficient in its business interactions while holding those who exploit our residents and communities accountable. This initiative comes at a crucial time as federal consumer protections have come under attack by the Trump administration, including the potential shutdown of the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau. I am deeply grateful to the support of the Council President, my colleagues, and Mayor Scott and his staff, who have collaborated with me to develop a cost-effective implementation plan for this new department. There are amendments that address concerns identified by the Law Department and minor errors identified by the Department of Legislative Reference. I ask a favorable report of the committee on the bill and those amendments. Mr. Chair, I invited a couple of guests. Online with us today is Eric Friedman, the Director of Howard County's Office of Consumer Protections. I had also invited Marceline White from Economic Action Maryland, who is unfortunately tied up in a delayed bill hearing in Annapolis herself. I also invited a constituent from the 3rd District, Mike Stewart, to share his perspective. Mr. Chair, I turn it over to you and to them, if I may. Thank you. And I'm here for questions. I'll sit somewhere, maybe, out here.
Doesn't matter, Councilman Dorsey. Are there any questions from the committee for Councilman Dorsey? No questions, then we can move forward with Mr. Friedman first.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to share information. And I really want to congratulate everyone who's drafted this bill or thinking about the bill, considering the bill. And it's very exciting that it's listed as bill number one. And it's quite a coincidence, actually, because Montgomery County Government created its Consumer Protection Office as one of the very first things that it did many years ago, 54 years ago, actually, in 1971. It was the first time, and it was almost bill number one for Montgomery County Government. And the first thing we'd like to share is just to upfront make sure people realize that this is a bill that will help to protect consumers and merchants. This is not an anti-merchant bill in terms of our office, in terms of what Baltimore City is considering doing. And as Councilmember Dorsey said, it's a perfect time and a very important time to have an organization like this to protect us with all the changes that are going on in today's marketplace. We're all hitting sophisticated scams that hurt both residents and businesses. It's hard for an honest, hard-working business to compete with the scammers out there. And so, we deal with all these different electronic forms of payment, technology that exceeds our ability to really keep up and to know what's going on. We are all using computers and cell phones that can be dangerous for us in terms of financial harm. And that kind of financial harm can be devastating. Any one of us, one small click as an error, and it can cause all sorts of financial harm for us. The legislation is really important, more than ever now, because of what's happening with the federal agencies being shut down, the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, as was mentioned, CFPB, Federal Trade Commission. What a lot of people don't realize is that the Federal Trade Commission does a great job, but it does not handle consumer complaints individually, one by one. Whereas the local Consumer Protection Office, our office, Howard County also has an office that can do that. And these are the kinds of work and assistance that consumers can receive that they can't receive anywhere else from federal agencies. The benefits of local consumer protection are very important. You know, many, many years ago, Ralph Nader told us how unsafe cars could be, and that really started off everything. Probably the most important thing that I can share with everyone is to realize that some of the things that are in your draft are just excellent, like to take all the businesses and put them together, business licensing, so that it's not scattered all over. Because as everyone knows, there's nothing worse in government than silos. When a consumer and a resident calls an agency or calls a government, they don't really want to know whether it's, you know, what department it is, or they got the right department, the wrong department. They want to just get help from the government. So when they put it together, as you've done in this bill, it's a very smart way of doing it. All the tools that you've put into this bill look like it's exactly what we need, what you would need, the authority to issue subpoenas, issue citations, to have hearings. These are all the exact things that you would want to have. Howard County has a small office, and Montgomery County. And right now, those are the only local offices in the whole state. Unfortunately, Prince George's County used to have one, many years ago, and they probably still have one on the books, but they don't have any funding for it. And that is a real shame for the people that live in Prince George's County. Now, we work with the state agency, the Attorney General's Office and their Local Consumer Protection Office Division, and we work together. And we look forward to working together with Baltimore City as well. And working together is what's really the most important thing for us. And let me just let people know, if any questions you may have later, please contact our office. Again, we've been around for 54 years. I've been working in this office for well too, much too long. But we've got a great team. We have an auto expert. We have experts on various different subjects. We've got eight investigators. And we look forward to working with the good people in Baltimore City. And if I could just close with saying, if merchants and consumers in Baltimore are shopping for good news, creating this new department will really be their best purchase. So looking forward to you and working with us, and please contact us anytime we can be of assistance.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Is there any questions from committee members from Mr. Friedman? Okay, no questions. Mr. Stewart, you can have your time as well.
Wow, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. My name is Michael Stewart. My vehicle was illegally towed from a public right-of-way by a trespass and tow company. In case you are not aware, a trespass tow company can only ever tow from a private property, never from a public right-of-way. I knew that what had happened to me was not right. But having no knowledge of any, having no knowledge of any means of recourse, I contacted my council representative. I was referred to the Trespass Tow Board, which never gave me a hearing or any circumstances. My council representative fought for me having to personally explain the law and circumstances to the staff from both the Law Department and the Transportation and the DOT. They ultimately concluded that I had, in fact, had been illegally towed. DOT staff informed the tow company that they had wrongfully towed me and requested they refund me, which they did. But having, but how many others in the situation did not know to contact a council representative to advocate for them on their behalf? My refund resulted, results only from months. Y'all gotta excuse me. My sugar just dropped, and I'm shaking. My refund resulted only from months of my council representative advocating for me and getting city staff to take administrative action. This was not only, not the work of the Trespass Tow Board, who never heard the matter and never took any sanctions against, actions, actions against the tow company for wrongfully towing me. It was administrative action that got this, got my results. Like the bill before you proposed to make the standard a model for licensing oversight. Having a dedicated consumer protection business license department will result in greater awareness of available recourse for people adversely affected by the business, businesses and business practices. And having professional dedicated staff to the business licensing oversight and enforcing enforcement will ensure consistent and effective response to consumer complaints. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Is there any questions from the committee? Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. We're now go, do you have a question? No, we're now go with agency reports. First report is from the Law Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hillary Ruley, on behalf of the Law Department, with the suggested amendments the Law Department has, which have been incorporated into the sponsor's amendments that he circulated, we can approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Finance?
Good morning, or good afternoon, Mr. Chair and committee members. Laura Larson, City Budget Director. We stand by our position that we submitted. I will note, we submitted our response late today. We do know, based off of the operating model of the new office, there is a additional cost that is intended from creating the new department. But we do believe that there is an opportunity to look to reduce that cost by examining business licensing fees and other fees from the licenses that would be managed by this office. Our bill response does note that a number of those fees have not been updated since 2008, which is the last time that the city did a comprehensive fee review. I do want to note that we are in the midst of reviewing all fees right now and are prepared to bring recommendations about updating fees this summer. So happy to answer any additional questions regarding our financial analysis of the proposal.
Any questions, colleagues?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman.
Director Larson, thank you for getting this information in. And I was pretty curious about what the financial impact would be. Could you just talk through? It looks like the 900,000 transfers from other agencies, where that's coming from? And I guess the general assessment of the, I get that the 10 new positions and the costs associated with that, but where the reductions in savings would be from across the city?
Yeah, great question. So currently, the licenses that are identified in this legislation, they are managed by different agencies. So some would fall under the purview of the Bureau of Revenue Collections and the Department of Finance. The ones, the tow, the tow board ones mentioned by Mr. Stewart, those would fall under the purview of the Department of Transportation. There's also a number of licenses that fall under the purview of Housing and Community Development, as well as the Baltimore Police Department. And so, as part of our analysis, we identified that there are existing positions or portions of positions that live in these different agencies that are doing this work. And our assumption is that those positions would move to the new office. The bulk of those positions live in the Bureau of Revenue Collections within Finance. When we get to some of those other agencies, it gets a little bit trickier because what we found is that it's not an entire person who is dedicated to this license. It's a portion of a person, and then that person maybe does something else. So I do think that as we, you know, if the legislation is to pass and as we move into implementation, we'd be able to work with those agencies further to identify additional positions that could potentially be, that could potentially move, or just try to identify how we would sort of manage the transition from the current structure to the new structure.
Okay, yeah, and that was, my understanding was that a lot of these are basically collateral duties for people within agencies who have like, it's not their day job. It's like a voluntold hobby. And so, I guess my kind of assessment is a lot of this, this net budget impact of 600,000 is effectively paying to have people do this for their job as opposed to tasking someone to do it as a side of their main job. Is that correct?
Certainly, and I, you know, certainly don't want to speak for Councilman Dorsey, but one of the primary goals of the legislation, as I understand it, is that making this process work better by moving away from a model where it's a bolt-on for a bunch of different positions. But instead, we have a group of people who are thinking about this from our resident perspective and what it's like to go through this entire process from beginning to end. And so, I think obviously, there will be a number of efficiencies that we realize from that in terms of just making it easier to go through the process and then also creating a clear place for where those issues, any of those consumer complaint issues can go and be lodged. Where we see the additional incremental costs come in is where we need things like agency leadership. So, you know, there's not, that position doesn't exist today. So we'd have to identify funding to be able to create the director position, as well as some of the additional non-personnel costs. Because just like how we said that this is a bolt-on to current duties, you know, there's also not necessarily dedicated funding for the software that is needed for these positions and that sort of thing that live in the other agency budgets.
Okay, and there's no, no, there are no, there's assuming no, like, net positive impact for an increase in, say, fees or fines collected or anything like that?
Our fiscal note didn't assume any additional fee revenue. However, we are going through the fee analysis right now and do acknowledge that there is additional fee revenue that can be realized just by virtue of bringing up the fees to reflect the current cost of service today. I think that there is also a potential that we would see additional fee revenue just from having a more normal functioning office that is easier for people to move through.
Okay, thank you, Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, any other questions? Councilman Glover?
I have a couple of questions. So, on the current requirements, you know, to become board members, it states that one member nominated will be coming from the City Council President. We have two coming from, well, one coming from the City Comptroller, two coming from the mayor, I'm sorry, three coming from the mayor, but two who must be attorneys and must have passed the bar, Maryland bar. And all other board members must be Baltimore City residents. I've talked to the sponsor of the bill in reference to this bill and asked, you know, if we can, you know, appoint even a council member to be on the board. He stated that that wasn't best practices because of, I'm assuming, other cities that have had the same sort of bill. But that would be an amendment that I would want to add on to this bill to have a council member to also be a part of that body. And my ask is, why couldn't we have a member of the council on this body? It could be you to sponsor, you know, to sponsor the bill?
I just want to make sure, colleagues, while we're going to the agency reports, just make sure it's germane to the agency.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's fine, but we'll just, I think there's either a question for the Law Department or the sponsor.
Sponsor, yeah, honestly, it's a sponsor.
Just ringing off the top of my head, I think this is creating a judicial, like a hearing style, a hearing. And I'm not sure if we, as elected officials, should be a part of said hearings. I'm just being very clear.
Yeah, Hillary, can you advise?
Yeah, you would want to get the Ethics Board to weigh in on that. I'm not sure that that would, and plus, you don't want to be having two offices that you hold within the city of Baltimore. Sitting on a board or a commission ex officio where you're just sort of voting on policy would be different than here, where you might be making, you know, quasi-judicial decisions. But that would be something I'd have to research, or ethics might weigh in.
Yes, please, because that was the first thing that popped in my head when, as a councilman, was asking a question. Because if we're, if this is dealing with citations, we're normally separate from citations because we set the amounts for those. I just want to make sure ethically if that's even possible. So if we can do that before a second reader and have that opinion out, that would be helpful as well, just for, to make sure that we're on task for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My office did look into this. We couldn't find basically any, we couldn't find any regulatory body of this sort that includes elected officials. And I'm sorry, Marceline White from Economic Action Maryland, formerly Maryland Consumer Rights Coalition. When I talked about this with her, she, you know, she had an immediate visceral reaction that like, this is, this would be a very, very bad practice. And I can think, I know Hillary brought up the Ethics Board as something you might want to consider. Just considering ethics in general, you know, we are prohibited as elected officials from even soliciting contributions to charitable organizations from controlled donors, so people who do business with the city. But it would be kind of similar, but kind of a parallel track if one of us, an elected official who is not prohibited from eliciting financial contributions, soliciting financial contributions for campaign purposes from any business, right? I can, I can ask any business I want for a campaign contribution. And if those businesses are regulated by the city under the, any consumer protection or business licensing law, and I were then to sit on an adjudicating board that determines whether or not they have violated the terms of their license, that would be a real clear, I would say, conflict of interest. And I think that this is one of the reasons why it is considered, it would be considered very bad practice to have elected officials sitting on a regulatory board like this, adjudicating decisions of wrongdoing, essentially, or denial or suspension of licensure actions that were taken administratively by the board. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Any other questions, colleagues?
But that's, that's why we recuse ourselves from situations they may.
So, yeah, so I'll take it offline because technically, we can't have two offices at the same time. And a quasi-judicial position is another office technically that you have sworn into. So it's just, just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
I got you, Mr. Chair.
That's no problem. I'm going to go with Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you, sir. BPD?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Kara Ashburn, on behalf of Baltimore Police Department. We also stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you so much. Department of Transportation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Luciana Diaz for DOT. We also respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you, sir. City Administrator's Office?
Tyler Chanel, Mayor's Office, support.
Thank you. Environmental Control Board? No recommendation?
Yep, they stand behind their bill report, Mr. Chair.
Health Department?
Good afternoon. Julia Roche, Legislative Affairs Director, Baltimore City Health Department. And like all these other agencies, we respectfully stand by our favorable report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture?
Favorable.
Thank you. BMZA?
The BMZA stands behind their favorable report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Fire Department?
Captain Dawson, Baltimore City Fire Department, favorable recommendation.
Thank you, sir. BSIT?
Fabian Dorsey is Program Manager, Baltimore City Office of Information and Technology. And we stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Now that we've gotten the committee, the agency reports, are there any questions or comments from committee members?
Just one other question. Within, I guess, the scope of agencies or business licenses, it mentioned employment agencies? I just wonder, what do you mean by employment agencies? As one of the departments that fall under?
Thank you. The bill redirects, I don't know, 18 or some different sections of the code from the Consumer Protections Article, one from the Housing Article, and number from the Business Licensing Article. These are already existing laws regulating these types of businesses. So everything, the laws that this department would exist to uphold are already written into those articles, one of which is on employment agencies.
Yeah, I just wanted, just for clarification, what is an employment agency? Yeah, I understand that it's the ones that already existed. That's why I just wasn't sure. A lot of the other ones, I could assume what it was referencing.
An employee, an agency that helps people to find placement of appropriate employment with a proper employer.
Like those workforce development agencies.
Yeah, so that's one of all these, a number, if you, if you look at kind of the girth of the bill, it's, it's like eight pages on the creation of this department. I don't know, eight or nine pages on the creation of this department. And then like 40 pages of minor references saying that like, you submit your application to, for this type of business license to strike out whatever agency was there before and substitute in the name of this new department. And there's just like 40 pages where you have to like copy a whole page in order to strike out one name of one department. in order to strike out one name of one department and substitute in the name of this new department. So it's got a lot of stuff in here just by reference in the bill. That's just one of the different things that we already regulate. I'll note, there are a bunch of different license types and consumer protection laws that I would say are probably outdated that, you know, once we stand this department up, I think a good next measure would be for us to go back and look at some of these outdated laws. Like there's one that regulates carriages and scows. I don't even know what a scowl is, but I'm pretty sure this is a word that nobody's used for the last 150 years. So I think we could probably go back and clean up the code a little bit.
Any more questions? Okay, we'll go with public comment. Anybody present that would like to give public comment? No one present? If you are online, you have the opportunity to use the raise hand function to be recognized for public comment. No public comment? So with that being said, we'll move into action. So the sponsor indicated that he wanted to vote out the bill. There were amendments before the desk or colleagues. Do I have a motion to move the amendments?
So moved?
Do I have a second to move the amendments? Moved by Blanchard, seconded by, oh, Lord, Jones. Sorry, I'm having a moment. It's okay. We're going to do a roll call vote. Tony?
Chair Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
No.
Mr. Glover, no. Mrs. Ramos is absent. Mr. Blanchard?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. By a vote of three to one, the amendments pass. Do I have a motion to move the bill as amended?
So moved?
Moved by Blanchard. Do I have a second? Seconded by Jones. Roll call vote. I vote aye.
Mr. Glover?
No.
Mr. Blanchard?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Three to one?
Of a vote of three to one, the bill will move as amended for second reader next week. Thank you, and we are now adjourned.